For Tuesday, September 5th, 2017, Mrs. Kennedy, would you please call the roll?
Mr. DeCanta.
Here.
Mr. Cole.
Here.
Ms. Sweeney.
Present.
Mayor Holliday.
Present.
Mr. Hochheiser.
Here.
And Mr. Menon.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Could you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
(inaudible) The United States of America and the Republic of Washington stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Did we want to remain standing for a moment? Steve, I understand you have a moment of silence, so you'd like to share some thoughts about a recent long-term new reporter, Mike Toomey, who passed.
Yes, yes. Mr. Michael S. Toomey passed away on September 1st after courageous battle with cancer. He was the son of Ms. Ruth Woodson Toomey and the late Michael F. Toomey Jr. The Toomey name is synonymous with public service to the Newburyport community. Mike and I grew up together in the South End. Also a member of the class of 1976, Mike was known as Bird, a nickname he earned after playing Big Bird during the Color Day skit. At 6'5" tall, he truly embodied the character. Mike captained the undefeated NHS Clipper football team, capturing the state Super Bowl championship in 1975 versus Wayland. He was a stalwart in a defensive line, known then as the C-Wall. You could always depend on Mike to do his job. Mike went on to Colgate University, where he played football, and graduated in 1980. He earned another degree from Southern New Hampshire University in 1988. In addition to his mother, his son Keegan and his mother Sherry, sisters Diane Toomey Rich and Masha Toomey Blake, and his niece Andrea, survived Mike. This large man truly had a larger-than-life persona. He lived life to the fullest and will be missed by all who knew him and shared lifelong friendships. I now ask of a moment of silence to remember Mr. Michael S. Toomey. Thank you.
Thank you. This brings us to our session of public comment. If there is anyone in the audience who would care to address the school committee, could you please step forward, state your name and your address, and try to keep your comments to two minutes or less? Is there anyone that has a comment at this time? No?
I do.
John?
I would just like to--
Could you state your name and your address, please, and come forward if you would like to be on the camera?
I would like the school committee to know my name is John Green. I live 112 Finnegan Way in Newburyport, and I feel that I would have a lot to contribute to the vacancy on the school committee. I've been a corporate executive, I've been a teacher, I have been a coach, and I think the balance could bring some insight to the school committee. Jack of all trades, a little bit here, a little bit there. I think the other interesting thing is, I bet I'm one of the few people that has been both a union teacher and then a corporate executive on the other side of that scenario. So it brings an understanding. That's all.
Thank you.
Less than two minutes.
Thank you. Any other comment at this time? Hearing none, we'll move on. Do we have a consent agenda, Mr. Menon?
I think we just have minutes, I don't believe that we have--
All right. Then let's turn our attention directly to the minutes of the Newburyport School Committee Business Meeting for Monday, August 21st. Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion, corrections, Mr. Menon?
Yeah, I just, it may seem like putting a fine point on it, but, you know, Whittier-Voltex school conversation alleges, and I stated that Whittier is seen as a last resort for students, and I recall distinctly saying that unfortunately, Whittier is often seen as the last resort. And I think that--
Clarifies what you did say.
Much more captures the flavor of what I said, so--
Could you correct that, Mrs. Kennedy, please?
Thank you.
Anything further, further discussion, corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Present.
Minutes carry unanimously. Thank you. We have an old friend back at the table.
Hi, Jake.
Hi.
Do you want to reintroduce yourself to everyone? And this is our student rep from the Newburyport High School. He will be with us for the whole year. You can see that he is an avid athlete because he has ice packs on both his feet and his elbow, so we'll just move on from there, Jake.
I'm Jake Lane. I'm a junior at the high school, and I'm happy to be here. So, just some stuff, mostly sports-related and class starting. Starting this Friday, we have a football game at Lynn Field, season opener. Hope you guys can be in attendance.
When is that?
Football game at Lynn Field, 7:00 PM.
When?
Seven, Friday.
Friday.
Yep. The ultimate first-team startup is continuing. The only thing that's not going well is the lack of funding, so if you guys have any fundraising ideas, please tell Mr. Parent, and he'll message them to me. This year, as far as I'm aware, we have two new foreign students, and that's great. I know I gave a tour to a new kid today, so I mean, it's great that we have some new faces in Newburyport High School. Classes started last Wednesday, much to the disliking of many students over Labor Day. I mean, nothing you can do about that.
Enjoy it in June.
And girls volleyball has become an official team sport, and they now have three teams, so they've moved on from that club, and I think they have like close to 50 girls who tried out for the team.
Nice.
Exploded nicely.
It's just a good sport now, and that's all I have.
That's great. That's great. Thanks, Jake.
No problem.
Thank you.
Committee members before you, you have a request for youth football, for the use of the fields prior to the policy allowances. I'm very sorry. We had quite a full packet emailed to us today from Kathy Manning with just all the support documentation, and the superintendent has brought extra copies of those, if anybody would care to look at them. You all set?
I move approval of the youth football, of the Newburyport Fields, as requested by the Youth Football League.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Here you go. Next, we're going to turn to the superintendent for an update on the opening of school.
Okay, so it was a great opening. It was probably the best opening that I've had in five years.
Why? Sorry.
It was, it was smooth, smooth, with transportation, with kids. You went to Bresnahan, there were not crying kids at Bresnahan. Everything just went really smoothly. And I want to give credit and a shout-out to the leadership team, because I think that they really were what was behind why the day was so smooth. But it was just, it was a lovely, lovely opening. And I sent you the numbers in terms of our opening day. We're tracking right where I would expect us to be tracking. And, you know, you saw that we had some students absent in every building, but those are students who are expected to have arrived by now. Many of them were on vacation last week. But seven absent from Bresnahan, five from Mullen, 12 from NOOC, 19 from the high school. So you can see the numbers there. This does not reflect any kindergarten or pre-k numbers or students who are outplaced, so that will increase our numbers. But it was just, it was a really great day. The staff was upbeat. I think we had a really, we had a really positive meeting in the auditorium. I purposefully kept it short because we were, we were tight on time for teachers to get into their classrooms, and so it was, it was a strong but short message to staff and sent staff directly back to their buildings. There were building meetings in each of the four buildings, but again, staff had time to get into their classrooms, so that's what we wanted to do. So it was, it was positive. And you were both present at the, you know--
Bruce.
Yeah, Mr. Menon was as well.
And Mr. Cole.
So I think that you, you know, you sort of felt the energy that was in the room among the staff, and I think that carried through for the day. So that's my report.
May I just ask, NOOC enrolled 39 new students. How did we absorb them with no new teachers?
They're, again, you know, they're divided up among the teams, they work to balance those. Again, you're talking about a span of three grade levels, so, you know, you look at it, and you're looking at 13 kids per grade level, so you break that up among two teams, so six or seven, we can absorb that.
So what are the class sizes at NOOC? Do you know?
They are, depending upon the team, yeah, they're the low 20s. We might have an occasional class that might hit 23 or 24, but most of them are 22, around there, so.
Thank you. Any other question about the opening day? Thank you. Later start times update. What we had said at our last meeting was that we would update the committee and the public at every single meeting to make sure we don't miss a piece of what's happening with the later start times. So there has been an update on schools meeting, so could you address that, superintendent, please?
Yeah, I sent that out to members of the school committee. This is, I simply, I sent an email out to principals to say, where are you, what's happening, I'd like to update the school committee. You have that in your packets. They've identified members of the committee, dates that they might have met over the summer, upcoming meeting dates, who's on there. As I shared earlier at the joint ed meeting, one of the things that the principals have asked me to do is to look at childcare options, so I will be doing that and presenting that when principals present in October. At NOOC, they're scheduling a meeting for mid-September. They have, they've reached out, and again, each building is a little bit different depending upon what their needs are. So at NOOC, they're talking to cross-country field hockey, their theater-music program, to see how it might impact them. They have a list of issues, they have brainstormed some solutions. They also want to talk to some people. I know Bresnahan sent out an additional survey. I have not seen that survey yet, but I was informed that they had done that. The high school was scheduling a meeting for this week, so I don't know if that actually occurred in NOOC, because I didn't have a chance to talk to Mike. So that's, in a nutshell, that's where we are.
We were asked at the joint ed meeting if you had talked about the number of, numbers of meetings at each building, or were you leaving that up to the principals and the members?
I'm really leaving that up to them to address, again, the charge was to identify specific issues to each building and how it would impact them, so I'm leaving that up to them.
And the other question we were asked is how were the committees developed?
Initially, I gave the directive to the principals to put together a committee. I offered arraigns. I said you can, you know, you definitely need to have staff on there. I would reach out to parents in the community as well. I think we've had a variety of responses. Again, I think that you're going to see between now and the October meeting, I think you might see an additional survey or two with some specific information they're looking for, but that's just a prediction on my part.
And we don't know the makeup of the NOOC committee at this point?
I do not. I can certainly ask that and get that back to the school.
These are just when we had our joint ed committee meeting, those were some of the things that the counselors were asking us about. Mr. Menon?
Just, all right, the feedback that I would give you, I'm really glad to see that we're moving along and that the groups are meeting. For the high school, I'm particularly interested and would really encourage them to continue to outreach to get parents involved. Having sort of worked with this issue and worked with a lot of the players in this issue, I would like to encourage them to reach a little bit more broadly than they have reached at this point with that committee. I would like to see a group of people that are really open to having conversation. I think this is a good start, but I also know where some of these folks stand on issues, and I wouldn't want to see a report that reflects a particular bias. I'm looking for a report that--
Would it be possible to have a student at the high school level?
Yeah, I absolutely think that it makes, I actually would encourage that at both the middle and the high school.
Too much.
Yes.
He's tired of playing football.
Well, I know, but somebody.
I'll pass that along.
Thank you. Anything further? As you know, the end of October is when we will get a report from the, each building, and then we will have to December to make a decision or changes or whatever we want to do with that. Any questions about that at this point?
Sorry.
Thanks for the bells and whistles, guys.
Sorry about that.
Bruce has a new toy.
It has a mind of its own, apparently. Could you turn it off, please?
All right, so, all right, I'll confess, that was my mother calling, so, sorry.
You don't turn, you can't turn her off.
I just did.
Uh-oh. It's Tuesday, that's why, she doesn't know.
That's right.
At the request of some committee members, I also asked the superintendent and the assistant superintendent to update us on the strategic plan, early day release plans, because we're looking at a process that's ongoing, that is spiraling. So I'm going to turn that over to one of you to talk a little bit about that, the number of days. One of the other reasons we were asked, people have been inquiring, again, it's always a big issue when we deal with the calendar as to how many release days we have, so we just want everybody to understand how we're utilizing that time.
So we're going to tag-team a little bit.
Great.
So we have nine early release days. We have four of them that are set for strategic planning, and five of them are for building-based meetings. And obviously, depending upon the building that you're in, is, that determines the focus that you have, because we're talking about primarily curricular issues at the various levels. And strategic planning is really about, in some cases, a continuation of work that was started last year to working into some of the new action plans that are there. And again, that's, that's determined building by building. I don't know if you want to add anything to that.
I think that pretty much, the building-based meetings that Susan's referring to have a focus on curriculum and instruction. So the buildings are determining what their greatest needs are, where that focus needs to happen, and the principals are taking a lead on those agenda items, and then teachers will work in small groups, PLCs, professional learning communities, or perhaps in some task groups around some of those things, so.
The other thing I want to add is that there are also two faculty meetings per month that staff are participating in, and those are both building-based professional learning community meetings as well as professional development. So it's, it's much more than the nine early release days where staff are focused, so.
And is it fair to say that some of the PLCs are continuing and some are disbanding and moving to another topic? Could you talk a little bit about that and what, why those committees ended, I guess? Did they serve their purpose? What's the feedback, the data?
Yeah, I mean, I think that some of the committees, for example, the scheduling committee at NOOC is a good example. They created a new schedule, that's scheduled for this year, so they really don't need to be meeting anymore. They've done that, they're, so they're going to be moving on to, so the people on that committee will be moving on to some other things. They have choices from some of the existing committees to some of the new committees as well. So again, I want to come back to the idea of one of the sort of central tenants to this entire discussion came out of teacher negotiations, which was about teacher voice and giving teachers the opportunity to be in professional development that they found that was going to be personally valuable to them. So we have continued that.
And I think as far as the professional learning communities that the teachers were working in on the topics, so the example that Susan used around scheduling at the middle school, they were all part of reimagining teaching and learning.
Right.
So that doesn't necessarily mean that the people that were in that group will not be focused on reimagining teaching and learning. Their first step that they thought was important at the middle school to do that was to look at the schedule. So now they may move on to another topic even under that umbrella. But, you know, the strategic plan is so, the topics are all interwoven, and the further we get into it, the more obvious that becomes. So it's, you know, as the teachers delve in, as the administrators delve in to the topics, they start to see, oh, look at this, we're already tackling this strategy as well, because it's connected.
Any questions? Mr. Hochheiser?
Yeah, when you talk about some days are based on curriculum or looking at curriculum, and some days are looking at the strategic planning, I guess I've always saw them and hoped they would be one in the same conversation. So, and, and I mean that because to talk about redefining teaching and learning without talking about curriculum seems to be amiss. I also read today, I don't know if it was released today, or I just got my hands on it today, but the state, for example, is looking at embedded social-emotional learning, so it's not, and now we're going to do social-emotional learning time, and now we have a mindfulness activity so much as how does that become part of what we do throughout the day? So I guess that's my, that's the overarching thing. Something more specific about the scheduling piece, though, because I thought, and we had talked about this at CIE, and, but I thought they were also looking at flex time and potentially moving to 990, and more than just, I got to be honest with you, I wasn't quite sure what, I know the goal, one of the goals for doing the schedule was integrating the new foreign language piece that we added. But were there other goals accomplished with that? Because--
Yeah, they were looking--
We talked about that, I didn't--
They were looking for a longer learning block.
Right.
So, which they, which they've accomplished. I am, I'm not, I'm not thinking that your, your comments are not right on target, because I think that there are some other things that, that are going to come out of the scheduling conversation. I don't know if it's going to be the same group. That's my only, that was my only point before. I think that they wanted the longer learning block. I do think that, you know, I've certainly had conversations with the, the high school, with the middle school leadership about 900 versus 990, and where we want to go with that, and what that might look like long-term. I think that, that your, your comment about strategic planning and curriculum, I think they are very interrelated, so I think that's right on, right on target. It's, it's hard for me to say specifically because it's too new in the year. I don't know what teachers have chosen yet. I will get that feedback from principals, so it's, you know, we're four days into the school year, so.
Right, we keep hearing that we don't know what they're doing, or they're like off in their groups, so they're exploring, that kind of thing, where, and then we keep asking, well, what about work on the ground? How is this changing, how is the strategic planning changing the experience of students in the classroom, reinventing if it were, making it more safe and supportive if you were? And so whether it's the first week of school, it's really the second year, or third year, I've lost track of, of this, and so--
Second year.
Okay. But, so I guess my, like, I'm just waiting for some, to hear something that's, and then because it says in the document that's the way you guys have five of this and four of this, it sounds to me like a very segregated approach.
And I don't think that's the intent. I think when we talked about the fact that we wanted to dedicate a certain number of our release days to professional development around curriculum and instruction, that the intent was so that we're embedding the principles of the strategic plan into all curricular areas. And last year, we worked much more holistically in the professional learning communities. People worked under large umbrella topics, and you're right, they're not disconnected, but you have to, you have to step back at some point and say, okay, we worked with a lot of ideas last year. We came up with a lot of things that we'd like to implement. How does that work in each of the content areas? Does it work in each of the content areas, or what do we need to think about in a particular content area? And that's why we decided to break them out a little bit, because we wanted to bring the focus from that really big picture back down to the ground, what's going to impact the students on a daily basis around the work we're doing. So they're not unrelated, but you also, when you have people, teachers who are in a professional learning community that's, say, around safe and supportive schools, building safe and supportive schools, everybody's behind that, and you talk about a lot of the ideas that are going to be implemented, like PBIS this year, like the All-Stars curriculum. There are several things that are happening on the ground that impact the students every day. But everybody around that table is involved in how do we make that happen, where the next level of conversation is, but when I'm in history class, or I'm in math class, or how do we embed these principles into everything that we're doing? So you need to have people in content-like groups that are, especially when you have content specialists that are, you know, teaching in a content area, to start having those conversations. So that's the thinking behind dividing them up. So we didn't do any of that last year, very specific to each content area.
So one specific that I can give you, David, is, so, for example, Tara Rossi for Mullen today, they held an assembly for all the students today, and they were talking about the Clipper values today, and they're talking about the emphasis that they want to put on the Clipper values in every setting across the board. So I think that you'll find that each of the principals is doing something along those lines in terms of safe and supportive, in terms of, you know, what does respect and responsibility look like? What does kindness look like? And how do we demonstrate that on a regular basis? So I think those are some of the things that are, are going to be emerging in terms of specifics that principals are doing to kind of bring this to life and to, to embed social-emotional learning across all areas in every building. It's going to vary a little bit. Last year, Bresnahan had some very specific assemblies around the values. They're doing the same thing again this year. I think that they're refining them a little bit more. As we go along and we get into the year, I'm more than happy to have the principals come and talk about the efforts that they're making in terms of social-emotional, for the specifics that you seem to be interested in. We can definitely do that.
Any further questions about that?
Yeah, one more question.
Oh.
The brochure, was that intended to go home?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Principals, principals have been given copies, and everybody was directed to send that out during the next couple of weeks, during the first two weeks of school. So if it hasn't gone out yet, if you haven't received one yet, you should do--
No, I received one.
Okay.
So I was just curious, and--
It was one sent to each family.
We were trying to keep one per household.
Yeah.
Got it. That would make sense.
Yeah, that's what we were trying to do.
That's why I was just curious. I didn't know. I guess it's always my feeling, and I said this last year when we talked about the testing data that went home, some letter of introduction to go along with a thing like that. Certainly, my son had no idea what it was. My wife didn't give it the deep dive, but she didn't know what it was either. You could work to figure it out, but I just always think some letter of introduction to things we send home, and how it plays out and what the big plan is, never hurts.
Good point. Mr. DeCanta?
This is not related to this item on the agenda, so--
Oh, I thought you had your pen up.
I do. Between items, I have a comment between--
Oh, okay. So you're a placeholder for me. Any other question about the strategic plan? Thank you. I think it would, I would encourage us to have a time when the principals can come and, and update us. I always think that's really valuable to hear, you know, at the building level, what the, what each focus is, so that we can not keep track of it, but I think share good work. work. That's the end of that. Would you like to make a comment now?
Quick comment, I believe we have the gentleman from the Newburyport Youth Football here. And if that is the case, he should know that we've already voted and approved on his book.
I didn't know who he was. I thought he was just an interested member of the school committee. You missed it, but you got the time.
It's all good. It's all good.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
I think you guys mentioned this last week, but the, the documents that people are going to be sharing across schools and across like ideas, I know you had created like Google files where different learning groups would share with one another. Is that going to be picked up again or is that
Yes, it needs to improve because we, we struggled with it last year. It was our first time trying to share documents like that. So
Well, the documents were shared
The documents were shared just fine.
That part went really well.
It was getting the data put in.
It's right. It's using the documents.
Exactly. Exactly. And we've talked about that. We have a group, we have a subcommittee of the leadership team that's working on how we're going to do the intraschool communications around the work with strategic
Better than we've done.
Better than we did last year. So, there's a group that's focused just on that.
Okay.
All right.
Remember, we're just a few days in. And so, you know, these things are all underway, but they're not totally pulled together yet because we haven't had the staff all, all together to even work through some of them yet.
Any other comment? Let's move on then to, we have our nurse leader Kathy Ricchio with us this evening.
We do.
So, I'm going to let Susan take over.
Welcome, Kathy.
Introduce and
Let me just give a little bit of background here. So, one of the things I love about Kathy Ricchio is that she is passionate about Uh-oh. She is, no, she is passionate about making a case for what she believes would be the best thing for the students across the district and the nurses in the district. And she's a champion at that. It's one of my favorite things about her. Can be a little frustrating at times, but, but it's okay. So, Kathy came to me, actually last year, with a proposal to purchase new software that's called SNAP that is exclusive for nurses. And I said no last year. And for, for a whole host of reasons. We, we discussed it at length and we involved several other people in the discussion. And because she is tenacious, she came back to me this year and said, we really need to revisit this issue. So, I was certainly willing to listen to what she had to say. And suffice it to say, she convinced me this year. So, this was a fairly significant software purchase for us
Yes.
In terms of dollars and woman and manpower involved in it. And so, I felt like it was important for the school committee to know about this and to, to really understand what we were, what Kathy was trying to bring to the district. So, I've asked Kathy to, to fill you in on what SNAP is and where she hopes to go with it. So, I will turn it over to Kathy.
So, SNAP is a software program that was designed by a school nurse. And I first used it 10 years ago in a former district and I always liked it and remembered it. But I really will say, I tried and we all tried to give X2 our very best. We worked years and years to try to make the software work for us so that we could efficiently document visits, get the information we needed from X2 and be able to function, you know, effectively. And so, you know, I could show, I mean, that's, she was tough, I'm going to be honest.
Oh, we know.
No, I mean, I, we, I did, I did try though. I really went back. I gave it my good hope and I, we have this whole notebook trying to make X2 function. So, just to suffice it to say that SNAP is designed and you can create templates that you frequently use for visits that you see students in. And you're able to, you could, you could document a visit with two clicks. And it, you know, an average visit at X2 was seven minimally. That was the least amount of clicks we had to make. So, we saw, this district saw over 36,000 nursing visits last year. And when you add in the extra clicks, so we're making around a quarter, 250,000 extra clicks on the computer. And I'm not kidding. It, that's, it's just what, X2 was kind of a square peg in a round hole. And SNAP is a program that, the other reason that I really felt was so important for us to revisit it was the fact that with the vaccination program through the state, I don't know if you've heard about the fact that all the doctor's offices have to put in information about students or adults or whoever they vaccinate. And it goes into a central database. Well, SNAP can hook right into that so that the information will flow instantly, we'll know exactly who's gotten what vaccinations and when. So, that, that is huge. That will be huge going forward. And then the medication administration, I mean, it goes on and on. They have a MOSBE, you know, library just that's attached right to the medication administration. So, if you have any question about it, you just click another button and then the entire MOSBE guide on all the medications is at your fingertips. And in two clicks, I could print out a parent information sheet on a med. I mean, it just is designed for school nurses to function really, really efficiently.
Kathy, would you talk a little bit about how many school districts use this?
Oh, 80% of the school districts in Massachusetts use it. It works now with over 4 million schools. It's in 25 countries.
What does it stand for, please?
School Nursing. And I was driving here thinking, what does the A stand for? So, I decided to say awesome program. School Nursing A Program. I'm not sure what the A stands for. I was just wondering that same thing myself.
Accelerated or
Yes.
We could make it up.
Administration Program.
Yes.
That's probably what it is. That's probably, that probably is what it is. Yes.
Sort of like an educator.
So, the Essential School Health Services grant that we receive through the Department of Public Health purchased the software and is purchasing the maintenance for three years.
Actually, the Specialty Nurse Accelerated Program.
There you go. Accelerated.
We have a matchbox. Gives us all the answers.
Excellent. Thank you.
Kathy, I want to ask you a question. Bruce and I were both on the negotiating team and one of the issues that came up was nursing time. So, you're saying that, I think I'm hearing you say that this program will save time overall.
Yes.
Is that, I know you can't calculate the amount of minutes, but how does this help you as a, as a nursing staff?
Well, it'll allow you to do more nursing and less fiddling around with the computer and trying to get what you're doing documented.
And is that done while the student is sitting there?
Many times it is, especially with SNAP. You can instantly get documented what you want to do and then it frees you up to either call the parent, call the teacher, go in and do a classroom visit to get an idea of, of what's going on with the student. That's the part that I really was looking forward to. Once we can get this thing really working and the nurses are quick with it, it'll free them up to do that next level of nursing care that they really want to do. And they can't, you know, they do a lot of extra hours.
And does it help with your paperwork?
Oh, yes.
Can you talk about that a little bit?
No, I just had that too. I don't know what it is. It's a fly or something.
So, the, so the nurses, you know, we have different things that are mandated to us that we have to do. And one of the things that we do is every month we have to document and provide information to the Department of Public Health. And that's again, through that Essential School Health Services grant. So, that actually every one of our visits is broken down by what type of med did we get? What was the classification of the med? What type of visit did you get? Did the child return to class? What was the disposition if they didn't return to class? I mean, it is so very, very specific. But what's really great about that is, is now we have had people like the CDC utilize our data and, and create, and do research on the information that's school nurses in Massachusetts provide.
And what is the cost of this?
It costs a little over $10,000 to purchase it and it costs $7,000 a year for maintenance.
All right. So, it took her two years to get you to agree. I can understand that. I hope it works for you because I think
Well, I can, if you, if you ever have any ti, extra time on your school committee meetings, I have, I was asking them, did you guys have a short video that I could show them? But I'd be happy to bring it up sometime and show you or, or take bits of a, of a video that they sent me later this, today. And I can quickly show you like the cool features of it if anybody's interested.
Now, there has been also a lot of professional development that's gone on
Yeah.
Already in a very short period of time. Kathy and the nurses have all been trained initially in this and you've had one follow-up session or two?
We, we had two sessions over the summer and then they have excellent telephone, you know, recommendations and support. Excellent.
Now, one of my concerns and one of the reasons why I held off last year was that I was concerned about the workload that would be on our tech folks and on the backend and what they would have to do. So, we had several meetings this year with our tech folks and they were very blunt about the workload that it would have on them. I will say that I think Kathy has worked hard to minimize the, the workload on the tech folks. There is some added, there's some added things that they need to do, but so far, so good, I think. I think it's, the nurses are, are happy. I'm still reserving judgment here.
Well, you got to give me a little bit longer, like, like these good questions that are being asked, I really, it was very interesting that I thought you guys were right on target about the strategic plan and the individual building-based programs. It's the similar type of thing that we nurses go through. How do we make this one visit impact the whole? And that's kind of exactly what these extra, these early release days are so valuable and they provide the staff and everybody that works in Newburyport Public Schools the ability to sit together and think together. And sometimes those meetings are more building-based specific and sometimes they're more kind of a little bit broader-based or they're, or we're tackling a specific something that we didn't have time to talk to and we're adding more people from other buildings and it's a strategic planning focus. So, thank you.
And the other thing I want to say is that I think that it, it goes without saying that, that the nursing staff across the district are integral to the social emotional support that our students receive across the district. And they have played, even in my five years here, they have played, every year I've been here, a more vital role. And I, I think that, that all staff really look to the nurses to sort of be guides in this area and they've done a wonderful job. So, that's to, that's kudos to Kathy and her staff. But this, this was a, you know, a new endeavor and I think, I do think it's going to pan out in, in the long run. I think it's going to be a win-win all the way around. But I am looking forward to, to seeing how this plays out as the year goes on. But I did want the school committee to be aware that this was a new purchase and something that, that we looked at very, very carefully before we okayed it. So
Do you have a question, Mr. Hochheiser?
Just a couple of quick things. Number one is, thank you for looking into whatever this is SNAP that, that'll help you guys spend more time with the kids and less time with the computers. I use X2. I loathe X2.
Yeah.
I think 95% of the people I've ever talked to who gets on X2 has no idea because seven clicks would be at a minimum. And I would love for every person who has to use it to have their own version of something else. I'm assuming this connects to X2, so the medical information
Yeah, every night it's uploaded.
Right, so the teachers still have medical information?
Absolutely. These are excellent questions, yes. Good question.
On the flip side, to, to grow the effort, have we thought about looking for a student information system that actually is user-friendly and has some sort of intuition built into its design?
We, we've had very
Not that I've ever found one, but
Yeah.
This is, this is the worst in all the states and districts I've ever been in. And I can't believe how many people use it. They must have a salesman who's really good.
Well, I, you know, I can't speak to history here. I mean, it was here when I, when I
And it's everywhere.
I had a, I used a different system when I was in Connecticut. We use Power School.
Right.
And I mean, you know, every student information system that I've ever experienced, it, it has its limitations. There's just no doubt about it. I'm not sure that any of them are terribly intuitive. They're designed to kind of provide basic information. I think that, you know, I think our focus on overall health and social emotional learning was one of the reasons why I was willing to take a look at SNAP to say, you know, this is going to, this will provide our students with more, with more nursing support than they might otherwise have. But I, I agree with you, David. I don't think there's a perfect system out there.
I think, I think we'd be happy with a more perfect system.
Yeah. Not sure that exists either. I think there's, for, for every system, there's a list of pros and cons.
And part of it is just what you've describing, because these things try to do so much, they do so little. So, it'd be nice to have something that does, that allows teachers to grade book, to allow, allow administrators to do something like logging our meetings the way you're talking about and then feeds into one thing that most people never have to touch.
I think one of the things that Newburyport has justifiably tried to avoid is purchasing, you know, seven different software programs because they don't necessarily talk to each other. So, I think that's one of the reasons why they've stayed with X2. I mean, I can tell you and Kathy will, will agree that Nancy Lysick went into this kicking and screaming because, because of that very reason. You know, we, we can find kind of the perfect program for individual pockets within a school district, but then they don't talk to each other, which is part of the problem too. So, again, I, I certainly share your, your, I would love for somebody to
It's just not limited to software, I suppose. Talking to each other.
Yes. Yeah, that's very true, Bruce. Very true.
Kathy, can I just ask you
Sure.
About student confidentiality with this program? Is it password protected? Is it, you, you talked about
It's another reason why I purchased it.
Okay, but I thought you talked about it gets uploaded to Excel for teachers overnight?
X2.
X2, sorry.
So, the whole program doesn't, just information like if a, the student said
Algae or
No, no. The, the nursing staff program is actually very, you couldn't get into it.
Protected, it's very protected.
IT technically can't get into it. So, they have to go through special steps. I have to verify that this is the person logging in at this point in time. I mean, it's pretty incredible. So, the only thing that uploads every night, and this is a great question, is like student data information, a new address, a new contact information, that type of thing. And the only thing we talk back to the X2 is updating this teacher alerts so they know exactly who's in their classroom and what they should watch for.
So, for example, if you had a student who had a concussion and there needed to be specific recommendations to teachers about how to handle that student.
That's right.
That information would get uploaded. Teachers would have that information. They would receive an alert, student has a concussion.
It technically wouldn't get uploaded. It would get put into X2 by the nurse.
Right.
And then the care of that patient is confidential within SNAP. But what the information we want the teachers to have, the nurses will go back into SNAP and quickly put it in there.
Would that be like a peanut allergy?
Yes.
Okay. Or, or EpiPen or?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Anything like that to save care of students, the teachers, and the teachers need to know, absolutely. But the only thing that's shared is demographic information.
Understood. Keep us updated, let us know.
Okay.
Continuing.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
This leads us to the superintendent's report.
Okay. I put some information in your packet about a grant that the city, that actually Andy Egbon, the city had received. And it allowed for the hiring of Tina Los, who is the regional prevention coordinator. I had an opportunity to meet with Tina and she is representing Amesbury, Georgetown, Salisbury, Newbury, Raleigh and Newbury. And she, the, the whole idea is, Newbury is pretty advanced in terms of having the Beacon Coalition. And this is really about supporting the development of other regional coalitions. And so, one of the things that we are doing as the six towns involved is that we are doing a regional survey for the first time. So, the asset survey that our, our students take every other year, we're all doing it together this year. It's going to happen in November. There's a two-week window in November and we're all going to do the asset survey together. And we really want to look at the data that comes from that on a regional basis to see if there are some things that we can be coordinating. One of the things that Tina will do is just communicate, for example, if Newbury is holding some parent meetings
if Newburyport is holding some parent meetings, that might be interesting to the other towns involved. She'll get that word out. And so, I, this is a feather in the cap to, to Andy and to the Beacon Coalition, certainly to the city to have received this grant. And it's pretty exciting because we're really kind of expanding the resources that we have across the entire geographic area. So, I wanted the, I wanted the school committee to be aware of that. This was a, what's called a Tower Foundation Grant. And we did provide information to the school committee in your packets regarding that, that particular grant. I'd be happy at any point in the future, I know Tina and Andy would be more than willing to come and to talk with you once they, once they really get underway. Tina's office is located at the Brown School and so she has an office there, but she's going out. She's going out to, and spending time in all of the communities. And the other superintendents in these areas are also involved. So, we're kind of all on board. I had an opportunity to sort of sell the, the other superintendents and to say to them, "Look, I've worked with Andy, you know, for this period of time and it's fabulous and you really wanna have somebody like this who's, who's out there who's promoting, you know, the health and safety of our students."
Mr. Menon?
Sort of a structural or logistic question. How is Tina getting support? How is she getting supervision and support? What's the structure that's giving her the support that she needs to be able to?
I think working with Andy and working with the Beacon Coalition and using that as a model 'cause it's a pretty successful model. And then I think she's working in the individual towns to help develop that and to make it unique to each of the communities that she's working with. That's my understanding when I met with her.
And she brings that level of experience to the job.
I'm sure she does. I just wanna make sure that she's getting the support that she needs, but conversely, that there's sort of an ongoing feedback loop that's happening between what she's doing and how she's doing it. I just was curious about how that is.
I mean, I've had conversations with the other superintendents involved and just, you know, talked about the partnership that we have here in Newburyport and how, how that's just paid huge dividends for our youth and that, that's certainly what I think every community wants to develop.
Are we managing the funds? Is Newburyport managing the funds?
Yes.
It's quite a rigorous review process.
I'm sure.
Very, Tower Foundation money does not come easily.
Yeah.
This was a real, real significant grant, you know, over three years. And it's, you know, really something that we had wanted and tried in different approaches because after the drug-free community grant, we could only renew it one more, once. We have two five-year cycles. And it began with alcohol and tobacco and look where we are on the other end of the 10 years now with opioids and all these other issues that we're dealing with. So, it was really important to, to try and reach out 'cause we've done, you know, some regional group meetings and Cathy's been involved in those where we've met with the courts and, you know, mental health providers and, you know, really trying to address some of these issues. But we knew we needed someone in-house, you know, to really begin a new level of work in building coalitions in other communities. So, it's very exciting.
I just wanna make sure that it's structured for success.
Yeah.
And this backup information that you gave us answers every question there is. You know, the goals and how they're gonna go about it and it's, it's a good, it's a really good document to write up. It's very clear. Anybody have a question? And this is for three years?
Yes.
Thank you. You were gonna do administrator professional development?
Okay. So, one of the opportunities that I had this summer at the superintendent's conference and Assistant Superintendent Bick was also involved in this is that we had an opportunity to take a look at these administrator simulations, which is a software program in which they create scenarios around a variety of different topics. Everything from, you know, a problematic coach to teacher evaluation to a behavior system district-wide. They have all of these different scenarios. So, it's very interactive software. So, what happens is you, the expectation is that you view these with your leadership team and their videos and you decide as a group, you're given multiple choice. You're presented with a scenario of a problem and then you're given a multiple choice, sort of which answer do you wanna go with here? So, you have conversation among your administrators about which way should we go here? Depending upon which answer you choose, that points you to the next part of it. So, it was really interesting when we participated in this 'cause you had a whole group of superintendents and assistant superintendents that couldn't agree on anything and that wanted to go in all these different directions. So, it really is about the conversation that you have around why did you pick this? Why did you pick A versus B, C or D? And that's really where the value is. But it gets you to understand the thinking that your colleagues have around particular issues. So, there were a couple of times when we were doing some of the simulations where, for me, it was like, "Wow, I never would have looked at that. It seemed so clear-cut to me. I, you know, I went right to B 'cause that was the answer. B was the answer." And then I heard someone's thinking on it. I was like, "Oh, I didn't look at it from that perspective at all. That's an interesting way to look at it." So, the, the cost of these is $1,400. So, we have purchased these and we're gonna be using these throughout the year with the, the leadership team. And I think that we're gonna find it really informative in terms of, of just, not only our conversations, but really getting insight into how we all think as administrators. You know, from an elementary perspective, which is obviously very different from a high school perspective versus from a central office perspective. So, I'm, I'm looking forward to the, the conversations that we're gonna have in the future. But I wanted you to, to be aware of that. That is one of our new purchases.
Nice.
For this year, so. And actually, at some point, if you would like to see one, I can actually, we can...
We can play that and see where we fall.
It might be, it might be interesting to see at a future, future school committee meeting to do that, so.
Wow.
These are the ones from DESI?
No, no. They're, it's out of the University of Pennsylvania.
Yeah, and Teachers 21.
Yeah.
It's a joint effort.
I know DESI was just looking for, I didn't hear about it for administrators, but they were just doing something similar with teachers.
Yeah.
They had to run like animated scenarios.
I can forward you the information. You'd find it, you'd find it interesting.
It's very interesting.
Choose your own adventure books.
It is, really. Basically like that.
It's kinda like that.
And how does this dovetail with your work with Michael Eitman?
Well, it dovetails pretty nicely in that our work with Michael is about working together as a leadership team and this also gets us working together as a leadership team. It's a different, it's a different avenue of getting at it, but it really does accomplish the same thing.
Because you've been working on the team approach since you came as an administrator. So, it just makes sense that this would, would continue in that sort of team way. So, that's good. It's all connecting. Anything else?
Uh, no.
Now who's beeping at me?
Still Bruce.
It's on me. No.
Could you tell your mother you're in a meeting? Um, next up is the Assistant Superintendent's Report. And the famous words, "Where's my thing?" MCAS.
MCAS.
One of my favorite topics.
As you know, last year, we here in Newburyport gave next-generation MCAS tests to our third graders through eighth grade, so grades three through eight for math and English, language arts. And as you can imagine, they're converting from an old system to a new system. So, the scoring hasn't gone as easily as anticipated. So, our results are going to be a little bit delayed.
I'm shocked.
Yeah, I'm like, I'm shocked and aw.
I know. And I didn't say that so nicely.
You tried.
I tried. You got it. So, what we've been given thus far is raw data for grades three through eight in ELA and, and math. And none of the, none of the short answer or essay questions do we have results for yet. So, we won't have completed scaled scores until probably mid to later October is what they're anticipating. They're hoping that they'll get the information to districts by mid-October and then lift the embargo by the end of October.
And when do we usually get them?
We usually get them the middle of September.
Okay.
And then...
So, about a month or...
Yeah, it's about a month off, a month or six weeks.
New system has managed to be less efficient.
Less efficient.
Less perfect and less, less useful.
Right now, what they're trying to figure out is, you know, they're looking at accountability data, how that all fits together because you've got an old system and a new system and it all relies on multiple years of data to look at student growth percentiles. And now you're using different scales to even score the test and all of that. So, that's really where the hang-up is. How do we make these two systems make some sense together?
Let's create a new system and then see if we can make it work.
Exactly.
And communicate.
And communicate. So, what they have decided to do around accountability is that as long as districts met their 90% participation rate and they were not a Level 4 or 5 district already, there won't be any accountability rating this year for students in grades three through eight or schools in grades three through eight.
We've reached that 90%.
We've reached the 90% participation rate in all of our schools. And, and then we did get, you know, we will get our accountability rating for the high school because as you know, the high school took the, the last generation MCAS. This high school did not go to next generation yet. So, so that data will...
That's a test thing, right? They didn't, they didn't make a new MCAS. It's not the high school didn't go there.
The high school didn't choose not to do it. There just wasn't even a test available, so.
Wasn't even a choice.
That wasn't a choice, exactly. So, it's a transition year again as we work through this, but we wanted you to be aware.
Says that so nicely.
Yeah, every year.
Because, you know, we won't be reporting out any of that data for much later than what we would normally report out.
And I assume that DESI sort of doesn't have this macro view that allows them to understand that this is just really a disincentive to continue to try to work collaboratively with them about some of this stuff, that it's good information, but that the implementation is just not what it could be to make it useful.
You don't need us on board, Bruce. We have to work with them.
Right.
It's not a, they're not, they're not in the business of getting us engaged.
I'm just really disappointed that, I'm just really disappointed that it's such a one-way ticket, that they don't have to work with us.
Well, I think it's not completely one-way. I mean, there are larger committees that are, that have been working through this process right along. As you know, there's been, you know, a large superintendent's group that was formed that worked with the past commissioner around this and around testing. There's been a group from the Massachusetts Teachers Union that has been working with the state around it. So, it's not as if there hasn't been any voice in this at all. But at this level, Bruce, like, well, you know, I'm attending these webinars around this. It's a very neutral. This is the information. Deal with it and, you know, this is what we have to offer you.
You know, in the years that I've been here, I've seen some initiatives that were really successful and some initiatives that were just not so successful. And I guess, you know, I'll stop whining, but it's disappointing to see that they are not sort of taking a look at the initiatives that are successful, like the teacher evaluation, the whole process to create the new teacher evaluation system. And they don't say, "We've got a model here that works. Let's just replicate the heck out of it for all of this stuff. Let's figure out how to do that." It's, they get something that's really successful and then they move on to creating a new process that doesn't really work as efficiently as it could. It's frustrating.
It's got profits in it, Bruce.
Oh, that's the key. I forget. Profits.
Moving on.
So, so we'll be talking about this more later in November, December?
No. It's gonna be a while. I mean, that's the message. It's gonna be a while before we have results and before we can share them, so.
But with all that, you know, did you see the Boston Magazine, top 50 schools? Newburyport is number 32 in the top 50. So, I just thought we'd end this little MCAS conversation with a little...
That's a good one.
Yeah.
Based on previous, okay, not the...
Not this year, right.
What did they use for ratings, Gina?
Yes. Well, here, I can pass this around. You can take a little.
There were a lot of...
Yeah, there's a lot of criteria.
I was just like, oh, there's a lot of criteria.
Yes.
There's a variety of criteria that they use, yeah.
And Angela, could I just ask you, and this goes back to something that Mr. Hawkeizer asked for, a letter to be sent out from the central office when you do send out the, the MCAS results to explain it a little bit? Have you thought about that?
Yes, and I did make note of that when he brought that up.
Dave, did you hear that?
I think that is advisable. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Because I think, you know, we're in the, we're in the field and it's just hard sometimes. So, I would suggest that somebody draft a letter to parents. Thank you. Was there anything else?
Oh, no.
No, that's all right. I'm just, I know you're writing something.
I'm writing it, yes.
Next up on our agenda are subcommittee reports. And we did have a subcommittee meeting this evening with Joint Edmat. And the topic of conversation was basically, Mr. Menon and Mr. Hawkeizer, you can help me here. The, the topic of conversation was basically later school start times and where we stand with that, how we're gaining information.
Parking garage.
That was before we convened the meeting. Parking garage came up a couple of times. That was before the meeting. Any other subcommittees met yet?
Curriculum Instruction will be meeting on the 25th at 5:30.
And FinCom, Mr. Cole, it's, is it still the third? Are we doing still the third Wednesday?
Yeah.
The committee's not having met. I'm gonna ask the chairs of each committee to have your first meeting and then determine what your meeting calendar will be for the year so that we'll all be aware of it. Some of it's already been determined. Some of it may change. I don't know.
When is the first FinCom meeting?
It's usually the third Wednesday.
Since we're the early start, we'll do, we're doing third. Sometimes we do second.
Okay.
We do third.
Okay.
So, we'll start there. And Policy, when will you?
We will be meeting either this Saturday or the Saturday after that, depending on how my committee members fall into...
Depends on what you're serving for breakfast.
Well, that we need to discuss.
Thank you. I just wanna take a look at some, at the bottom of our, our meeting notes. Excuse me, gentlemen.
Sorry, sorry.
Sorry, no joy, no joy. Sorry.
Trying to move on here.
That's what happened. Bruce moved the seat over now.
I know. This is not working for me. School committee business...
Working for me?
Take these, please, after I...
And you're not running for reelection, so as long as it works.
Right. School committee meeting.
Split them up.
Yes, the school committee business meeting. It says here that we have a business meeting on Monday, September 18th at 6:30. We all received information today via email that we will be interviewing school committee candidates starting at 6 o'clock in this room that evening. And we are anticipating that we will, we will be able to get to a regular school committee meeting with a light agenda at 7:30. So, I just want to let everybody know that. The meeting is in here this time, not in the auditorium at the City Hall. So, we, I'm gonna ask you to please be prompt. The meeting starts at 6. Then, let's see, was there something else? Yes. Please take note of the open house dates and times at the bottom of your information sheet. It's always a great thing for a school committee member to show up at an open house. It sends a really positive message to the parents and the teachers and administrators. So, there's a list for each school and the times and the dates. So, I would just ask that we consider attending those.
Can I just add one thing?
Absolutely.
I also sent out an email to principals today based on conversations that we had the last school committee meeting and I think even at the retreat in terms of just reminding building principals as they form their school councils and they develop their school improvement plans and tie that into the strategic plan that they sort of push that through line, through all of that and asked that principals make sure that they send... send dates and times and agendas and minutes of school council meetings to Kathy Manning so that they can be on the website. So that went out as a reminder to principals today. So I just wanted to, that's kind of a follow-up to our last-
Can you remind me if we are in the second year of school improvement plans or are we due for new ones this year? I can't recall, I'm so sorry.
I remiss. I think it's new.
New ones?
They're new ones. Yeah, we're due for new ones.
So, do we have an anticipation of when that presentation would be?
They, their first school council meetings are sometime in October, because some of them have to vote in new members, so they have to get people to volunteer to run for those positions. So, there's, they still have the rest of this month to sort of organize that.
Great.
There is, I mean, I can give you the exact specific date, it's a certain number of days.
No, I think it's 40 or something, 40 school days or whatever.
I can tell you exactly when that will be.
Unless that's changed.
No, it has not changed.
Is there anything else from any other member? Mayor?
We had talked for a while about relocating our school committee meetings to the senior community center, and it was a little bit of a challenge to sort of schedule, but starting in October, during October, November, and December, our school committee meetings will be in the great room at the senior community center, which of course is right next door to Port Media, makes it easier for them. I think the access to the meetings is better, parking is easier. I'm hoping that that will improve attendance of the public coming to the meetings, because you even come for part of it, because you don't have to walk 20 minutes to find the room. You know, so, you know, that's, we'll try it, and then we'll evaluate in, you know, December, if everyone seems to like having the meetings there, we'll continue.
I vote to continue. In January, okay. We, we need a roll call vote in a minute. Mrs. Kennedy, we are going to have an executive session this evening for the purpose of discussing pending litigation. The committee will not reconvene in public session. Could I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Mr. Mannan?
Yes.
Ms. Smalley?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. DeCanso?
Yes.
Mayor Holliday?
Yes.
Mr. Hockeiser?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Could I hear a motion to adjourn the public session?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.